Anacortes Planning Commission meeting of May 28. Ms. Gleitman, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Mills.
President.
Commissioner McCombs. Commissioner Ryan.
President.
Commissioner Martin, here. Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Jurewski.
Here.
Commissioner Courier.
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I declare the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three are minutes. We have the minutes for December 12, 2024. Have you had a chance to look them over? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of 12/11/2024. Any comments? Otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes pass. Before we go on, I do have an idea about the minutes that I thought I would run by everybody. I know it's a workload kind of issue to, and we're pretty far behind, we're almost six months behind. And I'm wondering if we could maybe agree, just put our line in the sand right now. In the next meeting, we have this meeting's minutes. Because it looks like pretty much every meeting, we're getting one, one set of minutes. So what if we just said, right now, we're just going to get on with it? And then as time allows, we catch up with the old ones. It's just harder for me to go back in December, and I'm sure it's harder for Ms. Gleitman to, you know, have to go through it. It'd be easier if it's fresher. And we have some that we'll have to catch up. What do you guys think about that? Mr. Coleman, does that sound okay to you?
They're, they're your minutes, so if that's what you want, yeah, we can do that.
Is that okay? Okay. I think that would just be easier for all of us. We'll just catch up, and then, you know, the older ones will catch up when we can.
Totally fine.
Okay. Okay. Item number four is public comments. And this is the time for anybody in the audience, online or in person, that wants to speak on anything not on the agenda. Come on up. You'll, we'll ask you to state your name and your city, and we'll give you three minutes. And, and don't, you don't have to worry about coming all at once, rushing to the podium. Is there anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. All right. Going once? No? All right. Then we're going to go on to item number five, which is listed as public hearings. We're going to discuss shoreline substantial development permit application for the Curtis Wharf Shore Power and Pumpout. And we have, Ms., is it Dewey? Am I right? Anna Dewey here. And, and I see some port representatives here, too. Welcome.
Does that work? All right, thank you Chair, Commission, and everyone in the audience. I'm Anna Dewey. I'm the Associate Planner with the Planning Department. And tonight, we have a shoreline substantial development permit to bring to you for a Planning Commission recommendation. And this is just a brief overview of what we have presented in the staff report, which should be in the agenda packet. All right. So just a little bit about the site. The proposed development is on, or part of Curtis Wharf, which is right off of, or at the end of Second Street. It is right next to Pier Two, and it juts into the Gwimus Channel. And the subject property is outlined in blue. And the current use of the site is a commercial marine pier, and they're proposing to have the same, the same use. And the pier is used for harbor craft, fitting out vessels, refueling cruise stops, vessel repairs. They have more than 400 vessels that stop each year at the Wharf. And the Wharf also includes a seafood wholesale and processor and a small-scale cold storage facility. The broader area of the site, Curtis Wharf is surrounded, or is part of the manufacturing and shipping zone. And just directly to the west is the light manufacturing zone over here. And all of it, I mean, the use of both areas is port-owned industrial marine facilities, and so this would be part of that. And then the shoreline designation in this area is urban maritime, which is why we're doing a shoreline substantial development permit. So the development proposal is to support the current vessel traffic on the Wharf and to support the reduction of environmental impacts from these vessels. And the following amenities are being proposed with this project, which is a commercial black, black water pumpout system and a mobile shore power system. The pumpout facility will allow vessels to discharge directly to the sanitary sewer system instead of discharging their black water at sea or using a diesel-powered marine vacuum to empty their tanks. And then the shore, or the mobile shore power system will allow vessels to shut down its engines and generators while at berth and run on grid power, reducing fuel consumption, noise, and emissions. The proposed shore power pedestals and commercial pumpout facilities are considered an accessory use to the Wharf. And the Wharf is considered a water-dependent industrial and port facility. And that is a permitted use within the urban maritime shoreline designation. And then the, the shoreline designation that is waterward of the, of the Wharf is aquatic, and this use is also permitted within that designation. The proposed improvements show that no alterations will be made to the shoreline, and the use of the Wharf will remain the same. No, they're not proposing any increase of vessel usage, of vessel usage due to this project. And all installation will be conducted using hand tools, either on top of the deck of Curtis Wharf or beneath it.
Ms. Dewey, would you mind speaking up or closer or something?
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
So all installation will be conducted using hand tools, either on top of the deck of the Wharf or beneath the Wharf from a works skiff. And improvements are designed to meet the needs of existing users and service levels at the Wharf. The project is designed to serve current volumes of vessel traffic and will not result in any increase in the number of vessel trips or vessel usage. There is a project site just adjacent, I think it's about right where the image cut off, a cleanup site that's Quiet Cove, and it will not impact the cleanup site, or this project will not impact the cleanup site. The port does have an agreed order with the Department of Ecology for remediation of that site. And additionally, the port has a right-of-way agreement with the city regarding the use of Second Street, which is just south of the Wharf, where the intersection is. And then the port was the lead agency for the SEPA determination. And they issued a determination of nonsignificance in November of 2024 for this project, summarizing that the scope of work will not have a probable significant adverse effect, impact on the environment and will not result in a loss of ecological function. And this determination of nonsignificance is on file with the Department of Ecology. And these are just a couple of site photos of the Wharf. These are standing on the Wharf, looking out into Gwimus Channel. And then this, on the lower right-hand corner, is just an aerial view of the Wharf. All right, so with the review process or the, the type of permit, this substantial development permit is considered a Type IV, which is a city council decision. So we received the application back in February of this year. It was deemed complete in April. And then we had the mandatory neighborhood meeting, April 24. And we had sent out the dual notice of application and hearing with a 30-day public, written public comment period on, in April 16. Today, we're doing the open record pre-decision public hearing. And then we have the closed record decision hearing scheduled for June 9th for city council. So we did have the project, as I said, there was a 30-day written public comment period that ended on May 16. Apple, applicable comments received from city staff were incorporated into the staff report. And then we had no comments received from the public or any outside agencies. So with that, the staff, staff recommends approval of this project with conditions. So the improvements that the port is proposing are considered accessory to a water-dependent use, which is Curtis Wharf, and they, that use is permitted both in the urban maritime and aquatic shoreline designations. The project is anticipated to result in no net loss of shoreline ecological functions. And the project is consistent with the State Shoreline Management Act, the City of Anacortes Shoreline Master Program, and the Development Regulations for the urban maritime shoreline designation. So with that, as I said, the staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval to city council of the shoreline substantial development permit, subject to the proposed conditions of approval. With that, I'll open up to any questions, comments, remarks.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I must have blanked out. What were the conditions?
I did not talk about them, but I do have them here. It's also in the, they are included in the staff report. There are a number of them, so.
There, there are 13 conditions, and they are on, in your packet, starting, I think on page seven. There was some confusion because at the back of the packet, it talks about the conditions are the same as those that were listed on November 7th, which was the approval of TDOC. So I looked everywhere. I finally, I did find those conditions, but they don't have anything to do with this project at all. But they are listed here on page seven, and there are 13 conditions. Anybody? Go ahead, Mr. McCombs.
It looks pretty straightforward, so, and it doesn't look like there's really an impact to anything environmentally. You know, I guess the only thing I see is it's, it probably might attract more traffic, so you might have more, you know, if you have a convenient pumpout, electrical power, it's probably a more suitable location for the, for shipping to frequent, right? To use. So I just wonder if there's maybe more traffic, but otherwise, you know, it looks, it looks pretty straightforward. I think the conditions are pretty reasonable and not, not too subjective. So I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go forward with the recommendation.
Chair, Chair Martin?
Yes.
Just a point of order. If you have any questions or clarification from the presentation, that would be a good time. Deliberation, you should probably wait until after you've had your chance for a public comment.
Thank you. Mr. Mills? Yes.
Will the port be making a presentation?
There's the port.
I recognize you were here, but.
Do you have a presentation? Okay. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Yeah.
Tom, guys, here.
While he's getting that ready, we will be opening a public hearing after this. So anybody in the public will have the opportunity to weigh in as well.
What am I looking for? What? I don't even, where's IT?
Scroll down on the left side.
All right. Uh-oh. Sure. Hey, guys, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Fantastic. I sometimes mumble or lean away, but hopefully not today. Thank you for letting me talk about this awesome project I'm really excited about. So.
Can you, can you, I know your name, but would you mind?
My name is Kevin Anderson. I work for the Port of Anacortes. I live at 1609 36th Street.
Thank you.
There we go. Sorry, guys, I forget the rules of order here. So, yeah, this is an exciting project because the Port of Anacortes's mission is to provide infrastructure and facilities that help our thriving, diverse maritime economy. And this is one that can help do that exactly. Curtis Wharf, here's a couple of photos of Curtis Wharf right now. It's really active. Today, they're loading research buoys that are going on a vessel called the Bluefin, which are going to go out to the South Pacific and launch their NOAA research buoys. It's kind of exciting. The other photo up here is a fisheries vessel fitting out. I don't know when that was, that was from maybe April that I took that photo. I think, I want to underscore that it's a very active pier, and it's typically active all the time. Just to go on the wayback machine, Curtis Wharf was built in 1903. That handsome gentleman down there, that kind of looks like a skinny Ron Swanson. His name is Melville Curtis. He was the brother-in-law of the founder of Anacortes, Amos Bowman, not Burton. And so it was built in 1903. It was a fuel dock, it was a coal dock, a gravel dock. They sold ice there. It was a point of embarkation for the mosquito fleet, enabling transportation to all points hither and yon. It's been active for 122 years. And I'm just gonna, we're gonna go through a real quick history lesson, because this is exciting stuff for me. On, on your left-hand side, that's what it looked like in 1920. In the 1920s, you can see there's a fuel dock there. To the sort of lower right-hand corner of the screen, it's a, it's the gravel dock. In the middle, that's the ferry dock. A little bit later, in the 70s, the ferry dock is gone because it's since moved off to Ship Harbor. And there's still slips there and still a gravel dock. And, and these photos are even further on. This is the late 70s, kind of the vintage of me. And you can see that there's still a gravel dock, and there's still vessels parked there. And then there was a period in the 80s, up until the early 90s, when Curtis Wharf was more or less moribund. There wasn't a whole lot of activity there. But someone purchased it, demolished the buildings, demolished the pier, and rebuilt it in the early 90s. And then it's, was turned into its current iteration, where it's got this concrete dock. And then the parts of the wooden dock are still there, they're just covered with asphalt. And here are a couple of recent photos. The Valor is one of the vessel assist tugs that escorts tankers and ATBs as they come in and out of our waters. And then there's the Bluefin loading up. And then this is an aerial photo from 2023, but you can see there's one of the Crowley tugs, which they make hundreds of calls a year at Curtis Wharf. It's a nice neat little tug, neat little part of our marine terminal. Doesn't get the same usage as, let's say, Pier Two, which is a lot of bulk terminal, bulk, dry bulk loading. But it is really active. And you can see those reefer units, that's those white boxes there. And I kind of put the picture over the seafood processors there, but they're really active at the marine terminal, too, turning crustaceans into cash. So as a sense, it's a real simple project. We're going to provide shore power, two, 200 amp, three-phase, 480 volt pedestals that are on skids so they can move around. And we're targeting the harbor craft market. Those are smaller vessels that kind of stay in our local waters, not ocean-going vessels typically. And since the, since the pier is so active and it needs flexibility, they're mounted on skids so they can move, move around as needed. And then a commercial black water pumpout. And black water is basically the holding tank for the marine head. It's not bilge water, it's not other processed water, it's just, you know, the holding tank. We'll have a meter so we can monitor usage and bill the ten, bill the users appropriately, and then also keep track of our usage for the treatment plant. And just to talk about the need for this, so both of these projects are funded by the state. The pumpout is one of its, it's a first of its kind for the entire state. It's funded by the Department of Commerce. In, in, in the state's wisdom, they chose to make the Salish Sea Puget Sound a no-discharge zone, but they didn't have, they didn't have a provision for these vessels that needed to be retrofitted or have expensive marine vacuum services come pump them out. And so just to understand the operations, a tug like, a Crowley tug will pull in and they'll do a shift change, stay for maybe four hours sometimes. Maybe they'll stay for six hours or a couple of days. Really depends on what's going on. But it's challenging to get a MARVAC service there and back in a real quick turnaround. So this facilitates and makes it easier for these vessels to comply with the no-discharge zone. Also, these vessels have relatively small holding tanks. They're big burly vessels, but they're built to go out, you know, all over the place. And they have marine sewage devices that macerates and treats the wa, treats the waste and then just pumps it out. They can't do that anymore, so they have to hold it until they're in port. And so the, the, yeah, so, so having this is, really facilitates that. And shore power, again, the vessels rely on their gen sets or their mains, depending on who they are, when they come into port to keep the lights on, keep the TV going, to keep the galley operating, keep the AC on. And diesel is, from what I've heard, a little bit more expensive than purchasing electricity. So it, it also has the knock-on effect of having fewer emissions, both diesel particulate matter and greenhouse gases, less noise, both for the mariners, in-water noise and near-port noise. And sure, I freely admit, you know, modern generators are fairly quiet, but any, anything helps, right? And then it extends the maintenance intervals, so there's less downtime for the operators. So this is something they want as well. You've seen the pumpout alignment. Not very exciting, just some pipes hung underneath the pier. We're using HGP, which is lightweight, durable, easy to repair, and very conducive to installation. And the, the piping will be, will have a slope such that it's free draining, so we don't have to have freeze protection underneath there, which is one less point of confusion and difficulty for designing. It's going to be a peristaltic pump, which is a type of pump. I'm not an engineer. It's just, I think it's like a tube that has widgets running around it. It's going to penetrate the bulkhead at about 10.26 feet mean lower than water, which is just barely within the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, which is fantastic. It shouldn't be that hard. We're going to trench in the uplands and connect to the sewer, discharge into the sanitary sewer. It's going to be metered, and we're going to provide the, the usage data to, we're going to use it for both the users to charge them, but also so that the treatment plant knows how much we're, how much we're conveying to them. And about that, we have to enter into an agreement with the treatment plant for discharge, and that'll be in place prior to operation, and we're having discussions right now. This is kind of what the form factor looks like. A little, you know, anodyne box that's white, looks like it could go any marina or marine inter, inner place. It's about the size of this here podium. And we'll have a little cart with additional discharge hoses so that if someone needs a little bit more hose for a low tide, or they have a high gunnel, they can, they can connect them. Another thing about this is there'll be a sample port that's built in so that the city staff can sample and see if our wastewater strength is what they anticipated. They'll do that at random, and I'm glad it's not my job. We'll have BMPs clearly posted, so this is not a place where someone can back their RV up and, you know, pump out their RV. Additionally, there'll be a bypass. Some vessels, they have built-in ejector pumps to push water, push the, their black water out, so they can connect to this, and it'll just bypass the pump, not, not like into the water or anything, but down the line further, you know? Is that clear? So. Yeah. Onto the shore power. So the shore power is the other part of this, component of this project, and this is funded by Washington State Department of Transportation. And again, vessels, they want to, they want to plug in when they're there because it's cheaper for those reasons I highlighted earlier. We'll have a metering system. We're only at 60% design at this. I don't know what that will look like. Hopefully, something fairly straightforward. And it's going to be on a skid and reel, and you'll see a mock-up of what these look like in just a sec. The conduit, we armored waterproof conduit that runs along the bull rail because it's easier to do that. And then at some point, it's going to duck underneath the pier and go across the pier, so there'll be two connection points, so these two skids can be at either the northwest side and the northeast side of the pier. We're utilizing the existing power. We didn't have to go to PIC and get an upsized service, which is really good for us because that's an expensive, lengthy process. And like I said, it's 200 amp, three-phase, 480 volt, which in the terms of shore power for maritime uses is kind of like real minor. This is enough to keep the lights on, keep systems going, heat, the galley, that sort of thing. It's not enough to keep a cruise ship operating. So it's a minor thing, but it's, it's important because it's designed for the, the traffic that we're getting now. To your, to your point, it might attract more, and we don't think it will, just because the pier is already so busy. That's what the reel will look like. We'll also have some BMPs posted clearly, so everyone understands, don't, you know, don't stick your finger in the socket kind of thing. And we're going to have to draft a policy such that after a certain duration of time at the pier, you have to plug in if you're able to plug in. And that's part of our funding agreement with the state. And that's really to help drive down greenhouse gas emissions. You can understand if, if a boat comes in real quick to take some groceries on or get DoorDash, they might not want to plug in if they're there for an hour. But if they're there for like four hours, that might be the breakpoint. We haven't, we haven't like massaged that policy or figured it out yet, but that's kind of the, the idea. I think that's all I have. Questions, comments, you guys? This is exciting.
Okay, Commissioners, questions for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Mills?
As I understand from your comments and from the material that we reviewed, the pumpout aspect is starting from zero. There is no pumpout capability currently. But on the power side, there's power to the dock, but it's not accessible by the boats visiting, and what we're doing now is making it accessible?
Correct. So there, there is no pumpout there currently. And this is bringing a new sort of amenity for, for the vessels there. And then we do have some shore power. Our electrician in-house built- And then we do have some shore power, our electrician in-house built up a skid, used to be made out of pressure-treated wood, now it's a bunch of galvanized Unistrut. And it's great, but it's just not the, the three-phase that the lart, that the tugs want. And so some vessels will plug into that, but we were looking for a more durable, more flexible solution.
Mobile, it sounds like, too.
And mobile, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, come on, guys. I'm so, I'm really excited about this, it's such, it's such a cool project for, for so many reasons, and it, and it's one that's generously been funded by the state, but we've done a lot of work here to, to get this here, and, and we, we've got our, our HPA from DFW, we're pretty close on our Army Corps of Engineers permit, we just need to clear this, and we hope to go to construction probably winter next year, when the fish window is open, so it, it'll be a really good amenity for the vessels that are calling. Whenever I see a boat that I haven't recognized before, I go hop out of my desk and I go down and see if I can talk to the skipper and ask them, you know, what do you think about this? And they're like, oh, that'd be great, you know? So it, it, it's something that, that is going to be good for the, the maritime commerce that we have here in town.
Okay, Mr. Juretsky.
Are the funds already allocated by the state for this?
Yep.
With all the budget problems that we read about down in Olympia?
We, we dodged a bullet or two, it's good, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work. As I was reading through this packet, I was thinking to myself, oh my goodness, this is, well, you filed it here in February, but the number of reports and attestations that you had to do for so many different agencies, it's unbelievable. I mean, I'm glad in a way that that's how things work, but seems like a lot of paperwork for a pretty simple project.
You, you know, it, it seems that way, and, and, you know, the shoreline master program, it's, this is one of these things, it's neither fish nor fowl nor fine red herring, it, you need to get a shoreline substantial development permit because there isn't a call-out for another sort of way to permit it. And we understood that going into it, and it is a heavy lift, and I really appreciate all the work that the planners did to review and usher this project along, so, yeah, we're excited to get it closer to the finish line.
And, and as a layperson, ah, I was interested in learning about all the different animals, had to look up what a lance, a sand lance was, didn't know what that was, all those things are very interesting.
Yeah, you know, there's, there has been documented spawning just west of the site, but we don't anticipate this project affecting it in any way.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah.
All right.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much, no more questions? Okay, so at this time, I think would be proper to open the public hearing. I'm looking at Mr. Coleman, yes, okay. We're officially opening this public hearing. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to come and speak about this project, the Curtis Wharf project. And again, the same rules, state your name and we'll give you three minutes. Anybody online? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. Then I think we're going to close the public hearing for this shoreline substantial development permit application, and now commissioners, deliberations.
Chairman Martin.
Mr. Mills.
Question for city staff, the pump-out water will be metered, and it, from the documents we read, it sounds like that there will be a negotiation between the city and the port, I assume on pricing of what they're going to pay for dumping into the city system? And if so, is it based on an existing commercial schedule, or will it be a negotiated price?
Yes, so I don't know the specific answer to that, the discharge agreement is something that's referenced in the Anacortes Municipal Code, and all of the fees are, you know, identified within the code and fee schedule. And so that is going through the process with our Public Works Department and our city attorney to finalize the agreement, but that, but I don't know more specifics about factual fees.
Your thinking is, though, that it's based on an existing schedule and not something that would be a one-off price negotiation?
I don't, yes, I believe so.
Other questions, comments?
No, I thought what Mr. McCombs said earlier, at the inappropriate time, was actually, were good, were good comments, though, in terms of it seems like a straightforward project and the conditions make sense with it, so. I'm for it.
Okay. Okay, I think there's no action to be taken, so. Oh, we have to vote to recommend?
There is.
Oh, there is, yes, that's right.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Mr. Mills, I see that.
I move to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the 13 recommendations as presented in the staff report dated May 22, 2025, and recommend a city council approval with conditions of shoreline substantial development permit, SDP-2025-0001.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Mills, seconded by Mr. McCombs, to approve the shoreline substantial development permit application with the 13 conditions that are listed in the packet. Any further comments? Otherwise, I guess we probably need to have a roll call, yes? Okay.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner McCombs?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Yes.
Commissioner Juretsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Courier?
Yes.
Okay. That one passes. And thank you for the presentations, Ms. Dewey and Mr. Anderson, thank you very much. All right. Next is also listed under public hearings, this is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, Proposed Amendments to the Goals and Policies of the Economic Development and Parks and Recreation and Open Space Elements, two elements. And we've got Ms. Graich here.
Good eve, good evening, everyone. Pull up my presentation here. So as the chair mentioned, yes, tonight, a public hearing on the draft goal and policy amendments for the economic development and parks, recreation and open space elements of the comp plan. I just give a little tiny bit of background information for those that haven't been following along. For these particular elements, the parks and rec and economic development elements, the city staff published a notice of availability and comment period, and advertised tonight's public hearing on May 7. The Planning Commission reviewed the draft proposed amendments at your last Planning Commission meeting on the 14th, and you'll recall that Andrew Oliver from Leland Consulting, who is subcontractor with Makers, who is the consultant on our comp plan, was here to talk about the economic development element, and then John Lunsford from the Parks and Recreation Department Director was here to go over the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Element Goals and Policies. So Planning Commission had some great feedback and good discussion, and so staff and the, Andrew with Leland have worked to integrate that feedback into the draft, into the trackers, the goal and policy revision trackers, and those updated documents were provided in your, in your packet. And then earlier today, we also updated the Planning Commission packet with a couple of written public comments that had come in after the publication of the packet last week. So those have been added in, into the, the packet online. And then, so after, after tonight, so the Parks and Recreation, Open Space and Economic Development elements are the last two elements of the comprehensive plan that, you know, the Planning Commission's been working your way through, there are nine, so these are the last, the last two that you'll be reviewing, the initial draft goals and policies. And then after tonight's public hearing, staff and Makers are currently working, but will really be working on integrating all of the Planning Commission and public feedback into a complete, updated comprehensive plan, consolidated document, that will then go out for additional public review and process. I don't know if you can see these, I just really tried to do screenshots of the changes that were made from the last meeting based on the Planning Commission's feedback. And so this is a screenshot from the economic development tracker showing some of the revisions, adding language about incubator or kitchen spaces for a micro enterprise into the policy ED 1.5. Adding some language about high, high-capacity fiber broadband into economic development policy 1.8. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions on any of these. Some language changing considered to explore on a couple of these policies. And adding some reference to a key focal tourist attraction down on ED 3.10. And then finally, adding a new policy under the tourism goal to continue to encourage the state to reestablish the international ferry run from Anacortes to BC, Sydney. Oh, one more. And then also encourage expansion of existing educational institutions, and then we added including culinary and hospitality programs at Skagit Valley College. So that was, those were the updates that we made under the economic development section, and then under the Parks and Recreation.
Why don't we, hang on just a second, let's just, let's just stop for a second and see, are there questions on this section? They all look great to me. Oh, I see thumbs up, okay. Okay.
Okay, thanks. So moving on to Parks, Recreation and Open Space, John Lunsford helped with putting these together. So there was some discussion on 3.11, Policy PR 3.11, about develop and implement plans and high-quality maintenance procedures that enhance the safety, quality, durability and sustainability of parks. So he added the high-quality maintenance procedures. This looks like it was just a typo, changing proving to providing. Under PR 8.7, it looks like we struck out the specific reference to the different groups that are doing work in the ACFL, just to leave it more, more broad and not leave anyone out. PR 9.2, we added reference to the US Bike Route 10. And then there was an errant and in, in this new policy. And so those, that was the extent of changes on Parks and Rec, are there any, any questions or feedback on those?
I have, I have one question. On Policy PR 6.6. And I, I think I did say this at the last meeting, this is an old policy, require new residential development to provide impact fee payments to the city. And the recommendation is to remove it because the city is currently charging those impact fees, but it seems like it should stay, to me.
Sure, it, and, and it could.
Yeah. That, that was the only thing. I understand he's removing it because you're already charging those fees, but, you know, on lots of them, you're already, the one above says to work with Skagit County to develop something that you're already working on too. I don't know.
Yeah.
I think it should stay, but that's one person's opinion.
I'm seeing some head nods.
Mr. Courier?
I would support it, Stane.
Okay.
We can make that update in the, in the next draft.
Okay. Is that okay? Okay. I, I mean, it's a little thing. Other than that, it looks fine to me as well. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Graich? Okay, if not, I think the next step is to open the public hearing. So we are now officially opening the public hearing for both the economic development section, proposed section, and for the Parks, Recreation and Open Space elements of the comprehensive plan. So if anybody would like to speak, come on up, three minutes. Just state your name and your city, hi.
Hi, my name's Marlene Finley, I live in Anacortes, and I'm the president of Evergreen Islands, a local nonprofit. I just wanted to share our support for three policies within the economic development element, highlighting these. First, ED 4.7, we support adding language coordinate with Skagit County to anticipate and plan for potential future uses at March Point refineries. And just to highlight how important this is, the development at March Point is subject to Anacortes Municipal Code, it's shaped by the comprehensive plan, and it relies upon Anacortes' regulations and zoning as being in, within the urban growth area. Although, Skagit County manages the permitting and the environmental review process for projects, so sometimes it can fall into a bureaucratic black hole, and we need to focus on this because of the greenhouse gas emissions and potential future uses that might come before us. So I urge you to continue, for the city to continue with implementing regulations consistent with the new comprehensive plan update once it's approved. Second, we support ED 8.2, the two additions that are raising awareness of local business efforts to reduce emissions and increase resilience. And an example of that is the Curtis Wharf Shore Power Project that was just before you. And second, under 8.2, that we support is promoting how the use of local businesses can help Anacortes meet greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. And then thirdly, Policy ED 2.13 adds language to expand bicycle parking and electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So we support these goals. So, we support these goals as proposed in the economic development element for the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Um, hi, I'm Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan and I live here in Anacortes. And my comments, well, they're not, they might not be appropriate for what we're doing here, but I do wanna, I just have a couple of questions for the Parks and Recreation There's talk, let's see, P R two point one talks of placing a high priority on completing the Gueymes Channel Trail. And during budget talks, city council was quite adamant about money being set aside for an E I S for the entire trail. And I just wonder where that, where that is. I was hoping John would be here tonight, but maybe the city could answer that. I mean, or, maybe I need to ask it in a different setting.
That, that was taken out of the budget last year because of budget needs.
It's out of the budget for twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
And how about for twenty twenty-six?
Oh, we haven't done the twenty twenty-six budget yet.
Well, right. Okay. Um, okay, my second question is about P R four point three, community engagement. And it says, there's a, well, it talks about a subcommittee of interested community members. And what I heard John Lunsford say is that the Samish have been consulted, but I wonder about the rest of the people that are supposed to be on this subcommittee. Shannon Point Reserve, Evergreen Islands, the Anacortes School District, there were some others mentioned. And so, I just wonder where that's, is, is there a subcommittee? Has it been, has anybody been appointed for it? He talked about some drawings that have been put out there for, applying for grants. And I wonder when the public will get to see those drawings. This has to do with Shep Harbor. I'm sorry, I don't think I said that anywhere. It's four point three.
So, so your question is about the status of this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if it's been established?
I see.
And if they, if this subcommittee, I don't think Evergreen Islands, I know, I don't think anybody has contacted them. I don't know about these other entities. Like I said, I know the Samish have been consulted, but I wonder about the others.
Ms. Graich?
Thank you, Chair Martin. I would be happy to discuss with Mr. Lunsford. I don't know the answer to your questions and we can follow up with you.
Okay.
And let you know what the status is. That is a policy that's not changing. It's been in the plan. And so, yes, I, I will follow up with you after talking with Mr. Lunsford. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Anyone online?
There are, we do have two attendees, but they don't have their hands raised.
Okay.
So, if they, please raise your hand if you would like to provide comments. Give them a minute, maybe. Any, any hands? Nope. Okay.
Okay. Well, hearing none. I'm about to close this public hearing. So, we'll close the public hearing on these two elements of the proposed comprehensive plan. And we're gonna just move on. I think there's no motion for this one, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Just getting the, the public testimony and comments.
The opportunity.
And we will take that forward into the next draft.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you schooling me. All right. Number six is other business. I don't see anything listed here. And I see Mr. Coleman coming for the planning department update.
Good evening, Planning Commission, members of the public. My name's John Coleman. I'm the director of the Planning Community and Economic Development Department for the city of Anacortes, of course. So, not a lot to report. On June eleventh, we plan to be talking about the remaining housing action plan items. That's the next Planning Commission meeting. We sure would love to be able to finish up the work on the housing action plan at that meeting, but it's likely that it will continue through June twenty-fifth. You may also see that on the June second city council agenda, there's a presentation from Transpo, that is our transportation element consultant. They're doing a lot of work for the city, not just the, the transportation element. They, but they are doing the transportation element and we're also calling that the transportation master plan. So, it's like a really bulked up sort of transportation element, but we just, the Public Works Department wanted to make both of those documents kind of the same, make them the same thing so that there's no redundancy or, or disconnect between the two. We wanted to have a transportation master plan. And that transportation master plan is going to help identify projects on our six-year tip. So, we're required to have a, Public Works Department maintains a six-year transportation improvement program list. So, those are the projects that they want to do in the, in the near term. So, they need to do that by sometime in July. So, they need to, so they're presenting the transportation master plan, which is the transportation element in its draft form. So, it's the first that anybody will see this entire document. Normally, that would have come to the Planning Commission first when we bring the, all of the, all of the, the comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission for review. But just because of necessity of this transportation improvement plan, they're presenting it straight to city council, it, for, for that purpose. It will, of course, come back here and go through a whole public review process. They're not expecting any, they're not expecting council to take any action on the master plan, but just have it out there for the background information for their six-year tip planning process. So, didn't want anybody to be confused about that. It is a little odd that it's out there before, you know, the, the rest of the comp plan, but I suppose with that, we could bring any of the, if we had any elements done, we could bring them to the Planning Commission now. But we were planning to bring them all together in one big public comment period later this summer. So, don't be confused or surprised about that. And then, we received notice from Skagit Transit that there, this isn't Anacortes-related, but it's transportation-related. The Skagit Transit is doing a pilot bus service on Gueymes Island. So, Monday through Saturday, once the ferry's running again, they're gonna bring a bus out there and then they're gonna do a, by appointment-only transportation to schedule people to bring them to the ferry so that they can then walk on the ferry and then take public transportation to places in Anacortes or beyond if, if they so wish. So, that's a pilot program that's gonna be starting once they get the ferry up and running again, which is still supposed to be in early June. I don't have that date, but I think the mayor reported that last night at the city council. And that is the extent of our planning department update.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any questions for Mr. Coleman? So, just to be clear, is the transportation master plan, is there anything different from the transportation element of the comprehensive?
No.
Plan that we've seen so far?
You've only seen the goals and policies as proposed and, you know, you've given your input and there's been modifications and there's probably been some tweaks based on what you've said the last time and the public comments from the last time. I can't say what sort of changes that were done. But the whole plan is now apparently in draft form and gonna be presented to the city council. And then, we'll, we'll bring to the Planning Commission when we have the rest of the comp plan ready to, 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 to review.
Okay, thank you. Any kind of update on, I know that there was a consultant working with the department on department procedures. Is there any kind of update about that?
Yeah, we're on track with that. So, they're still finalizing some, they're still finalizing their recommendations and plan and then that's gonna come to staff to review. And then, after staff has a chance to go through it and ask questions and make sure it suits what we're trying to achieve, then they'll make more edits. So, we're still in the process.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Chairman Martin. June is upon us and I apologize if it's on the city calendar. I haven't looked for the last couple of weeks, but the last time I looked, I couldn't find it. The city council off-site meeting with staff, has that been calendarized yet?
You're taught, you're, I believe you're speaking about the, the council retreat?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's June twelfth.
It's, it's June twelfth at E S D one eighty-nine from eight to four. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, let's see, seven oh three, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for coming.